Thank you. Clerk Segrist, can you please call roll?
All right. Borninski.
Here.
Foster.
Good evening.
Ganguly.
Hello, I'm here at my home in Canton Township.
Graham Hudek.
Good evening, here.
Does the record reflect that Clerk Segrist is in attendance? Slavens.
Good evening.
Anne Snyderman.
I am here.
Great, thank you. Can I hear a motion to adopt the agenda?
So moved.
Support.
Moved by Clerk Segrist, supported by Treasurer Slavens. Clerk Segrist, please take roll.
Borninski.
Aye.
Foster.
Aye.
Ganguly.
Aye.
Graham Hudek.
Aye.
Segrist, aye. Slavens?
Aye.
Snyderman?
Aye.
Thank you. Next, motion passed. Next item is approval of minutes from September 14, 2021.
So moved.
Support.
Motion by Clerk Segrist, supported by Trustee Snyderman. Clerk Segrist, please take roll call.
Foster.
Aye.
Aye.
Graham Hudek.
Aye.
Segrist, aye. Slavens?
Aye.
Snyderman?
Aye.
Aye.
Motion passes. Next item is public comment. A three-minute public comment. Please give your name and address and... Yes, over at the podium. Thank you. I don't think we have cards there anymore.
Hello, Madam Supervisor and Board of Trustees. So nice to be in front of you. My name is Carol Bowden Miller. I live at 1694 Woodbridge Court, Canton, Michigan. I've lived there about 45 years. I've come before you to speak about a matter that may seem rather small, but for the people that's involved in this matter, it's rather large. And that is Independence Park. That is one of the biggest parks that is in Canton that has so many people at that park at one time. I'm sure you're all familiar with the park. In case you're not... I have copies for each one of you.
Thank you. There are maps of Independence Park.
During the soccer season, that park is overwhelmed with people. The reason I know is that I attend there when my granddaughter plays soccer for practices and for games. There is only one restroom, and as you notice, it's in the middle. Now, if you're playing over in Field 10 or in the other direction, Field 12, if you had to use the facility, by the time you got there, your game would be over with. Get there and get back. And I've come before you to ask if there isn't any way that we could perhaps have some portageons on the north side and the south side. One or two on each side. I know that they bring in portageons for when they have the...
Handcuff?
Yes. But the rest of the time, there isn't any. And I know, as I say, this probably sounds like a small matter. But as people get older, like myself, we need to use the facilities more often. And a lot of grandparents are out there with their children. And also, the children many times come from school, right from school, and they really don't have a chance to use the facilities at home or at school. So they also need to use them. So I would just like you to take it under your consideration to see if not you could look into this and perhaps talk to the Department of Leisure Services to see if they can perhaps do something. Are there any questions?
No, thank you, Mrs. Bowden Miller. We'll have our Leisure Services staff look into it, and we can send you an email.
Well, I have talked to him.
Oh. Okay.
That's correct. We spoke last week, and we're looking into it already. And I have your contact information. We'll be following up with you this week.
Okay, fine. Thank you so much.
Thank you.
I'm going to sit here and listen to you for a while.
Thank you for coming.
George Miller. I'd like to know, within the last month or two and the minutes, there was consideration of buying an excavator for Public Works Department. Is that true, within the minutes?
I believe so. Can you speak a little bit more into the microphone, George, so we can hear you?
Is that true that you were going to consider buying an excavating shovel for $140,000 for the DPW yard that was in the minutes?
Yes.
I'd like to know what's wrong with the one that's sitting there now.
Well, we can respond to you in writing, George. I think we already did that. We'll send it again.
If I have to put a foyer out for that, because that was bought sometime ago, and like I said, I've been through the maps here. Your back holes go 15 foot approximately, and they service the water and sewers in the subdivision. Detroit Water Department takes the main water mains, which are 20, 25, 30 foot deep. They're supposed to service those. I want to know what the use is for that shovel.
Okay.
There's no use... You don't service anything that reaches 25 foot, I don't believe. Another thing is the theater out there. Let me get my notes straight here. There's like $146,000, November of '19, in the meetings here. That's for seats out there? Is that theater paying for itself? Is it making enough revenue to pay for the seats, the roof, and the lawn, and whatever needs to be done to it? And where is that money coming from? You have a fund here for just about everything: police department, library, so forth. I don't see a fund for that.
We can send you that in writing also, George. It's part of the budget.
It's part of the general fund, you're telling me?
It's part of the budget. We will send you those details in email, okay? You can come up to the office, and we can talk about it.
Also, with the Tax Tribunal Board, and I've addressed this issue before. I'd like to know why the supervisor or the Board of Trustees appoint someone. Isn't that a conflict of interest? That's what I've been told by other trustees in the past and other municipalities. We have six vans back here. I've addressed that issue, and I don't know how it's coming along with the hoist. Why do we need six vans for latchkey? At $25,000 a van, maybe, or more? You know, two or three would seem to be sufficient. And another thing that's heavy on my mind, there was a thing here where the veterans were going to start over by Walmart on Ford Road, start a facility. What happened to that? Did they back out of it, or just what happened?
VA facility is opening up in a few weeks.
Good. Thank you for your time.
Thank you, George. We'll send you those questions. Any other public comment? Do we have any online? Nope. Okay, great. Thank you. Payment of bills is the next item on the agenda.
Madam Supervisor, I motion that we pay the bills.
Support.
Moved by Treasurer Slavens, supported by Trustee Summer. Clerk Segrist, please take roll.
Aye.
Segrist, aye. Slavens?
Aye.
Snyderman?
Aye.
Borninski?
Aye.
Foster?
Aye.
Motion passes. Next item on the agenda is the consent calendar.
Madam Supervisor, I move that the board approve the consent calendar as presented. Item C1, consider approval to accept the supplemental award from the Shuttered Venue Operators Grant. Item C2, consider approval of the replacement of two AC condensers and two case coils for Human Services Building in connection with the capital improvement program. Item C3, consider reappointments to the tax board review. And item C4, consider approving a 2021 emergency management budget adjustment from FIRE.
Support.
Moved by Clerk Segrist, supported by... We had three of them. Kate Borninski, Trustee Borninski. Clerk Segrist, please take roll call.
Graham Hudek.
Aye.
Segrist, aye. Slavens?
Aye.
Snyderman?
Aye.
Borninski?
Aye.
Foster?
Aye.
Ganguly?
Aye.
Motion passes. Next item on the agenda is the general calendar. Item G1, request purchase of computer workstation and monitor replacements.
Madam Supervisor, I move to create a new purchase order to Dell computers in an amount not to exceed $59,764 to cover the cost of purchasing nine computers and 185 monitors.
Support.
Motion made by Clerk Segrist, supported by Trustee Borninski. IT Services prepares annual budgets to replace 1/4 of the township-wide fleet of personal computers every year. This request is for the 2021 replacement computers and computer monitors. A small number of computers are being replaced and initially budgeted due to the grant funding received in 2020, which replaced a significant number of workstations with laptops. That purchase allowed the township to respond to the COVID-19 pandemic by permitting employees to work remotely when possible. Due to those computer replacements in 2020, there exists excess budget dollars in 2021 computer replacement funding, which IT Services is seeking to repurpose for additional monitor replacements in combination with existing funded monitor upgrades. There are currently 185 monitors in use throughout the township that are eight years or older and whose sizes no longer provide for employee efficiencies when utilizing modern software applications. IT believes providing employees with monitor upgrades at 24-inch widescreen format will allow employees to be more productive. Director Trumbull, do you have anything to add?
Yeah, the only thing I have to add is that we were budgeting to replace about half of those monitors in 2021 and the other half in 2022. So because the funding existed for the computer replacements, we're asking to repurpose those budget dollars for '21, and then the '22 budget will be reduced by what was initially shown to the board back seven months ago for those monitors that we were going to purchase next year. This allows, I think, all of the computers in the township, the monitors to be upgraded to the larger screen, which I know has kind of been a request from a lot of different departments. Some people might be wanting dual monitors if they only have one. That does not include purchasing extra monitors. It's replacing a one-for-one. And if there's extra needs, then we'll have to come back before the board with those if there are other wants in the township. But this should help all of the individuals in the township with the smaller monitors be able to work more efficiently.
Thank you. Any discussion or questions?
So, just so I'm clear, we're ending up getting more this year or next year?
This year. We're doubling up this year, and we're reducing the '22 budget that we had initially shown to the board. So you'll see that, you know, in a few weeks when we show the '22 budget changes, you'll see that we're reducing the IT budget for those monitors.
Do you think... So will those budget dollars stay somewhere else in IT or go somewhere else?
Oh, yeah. There's plenty of other additions.
I thought so. Thank you.
You're welcome.
Kate?
Just a comment. I just wanted to thank Director Trumbull and the supervisor for talking to me about this this afternoon and answering my questions.
Thank you. Anything else? All right. Clerk Segrist, please take roll call on the motion.
Segrist, aye. Slavens?
Aye.
Snyderman?
Aye.
Borninski?
Aye.
Ganguly?
Aye.
Foster?
Aye.
Graham Hudek?
Aye.
Motion passes. Item G2, consider resolution regarding zoning nonconformities as a result of MDOT Ford Road Boulevard project.
Madam Supervisor, I move that the board adopt the following resolution for the approval of zoning nonconformities as a result of MDOT project. Whereas in April 2014, the Charter Township of Canton, Canton Township, and the Michigan Department of Transportation, MDOT, with the participation of Canton Township Downtown District Authority, or DDA, and Wayne County, County, conducted a traffic and environmental study to address safety and congestion concerns involving the stretch of roadway known as M153, or Ford Road, in Canton Township. The purpose of the study was to identify a preferred alternative for improvements on Ford Road between Lots Road and Sheldon. And whereas, the parties identified an alternative that will improve operational service on Ford Road between Lots Road and Sheldon Road without degrading I-275 interchange operations. And whereas, at a regular meeting of the Township Board on December 4, 2018, the board approved an agreement with MDOT for the Ford Road M153 Boulevard project, the project. Whereas, the project includes the installation of a boulevard to improve traffic flows along Ford Road and at the intersections of Ford and Hagerty Roads. Whereas, the installation of a boulevard will result in the widening of parts of Ford Road and Hagerty Road, which may impact, among other things, front and side yard setbacks, parking requirements, required open space, and required landscape installations. As a result, some of the properties within the project area may be considered nonconforming pursuant to the terms of Canton Township's zoning ordinance. Whereas, Canton Township desires to ensure that those properties rendered nonconforming as a result of the project will not be negatively impacted with respect to future use and development of the properties. And finally, whereas, Canton Township agrees to waive certain requirements under Article III of the zoning ordinance, including front and side yard setbacks, parking requirements, required open space, and certain required landscaping installation requirements. Now therefore be it resolved, the Board of Trustees of the Charter Township of Canton, Michigan, hereby resolve the following. One, those properties along Ford Road and Hagerty Road, which as a result of the project are deemed nonconforming under the provisions of Article III of the Canton Township zoning ordinance, are hereby designated as legally nonconforming. Two, that those properties, which are deemed nonconforming as a result of the project, shall not be required to correct any nonconformities as a result of the project upon development or redevelopment of their property unless required by Article III of the zoning ordinance. Three, that any property that has a nonconformity established as a result of the project shall be documented as a legally nonconforming site in accordance with Section 3.02 of the zoning ordinance. Four, certain variances that may be required as a result of the project are approved as following. A, pursuant to Section 6.10D footnote E of the zoning ordinance, any front yard setbacks changed as a result of the projects are hereby approved as a conforming front yard setback in the central business district overlay. B, pursuant to Section 4.01C6 of the zoning ordinance, any reductions in the number of parking spaces below the required minimum number of spaces as a result of the project are hereby approved. C, all reductions in the minimum width of the landscape buffer adjacent to the road pursuant to Section 6.10E7 as a result of the project are hereby approved. D, any open space that is lost as a result of the right-of-way acquisition, even if it reduces the amount of open space below the 25% minimum required in Section 6.10E1, shall not be required to be replaced and shall be deemed approved. E, the community planner may administratively approve other variances as a result of the project that are deemed minor in nature in the opinion of the community planner. Other such variances deemed major in nature by the community planner will be referred to the Zoning Board of Appeals for consideration of a variance, or referred to the Township Board of Trustees for consideration of an amendment to this resolution. Five, the fees for any site plan review projects or variance requests that may be required for any property as a result of the project are hereby waived. Six, and finally, six, the additional changes to any affected properties initiated by the owner will still be required to seek a variance from the Zoning Board of Appeals for the expansion of a nonconformity, or if applicable, seek a modification from the Planning Commission.
Support.
Motion made by Clerk Segrist, supported by Trustee Borninski. I think that's the longest motion you ever read.
It is the longest I have ever read.
The Michigan Department of Transportation, MDOT, proposes a future reconstruction of Ford Road from east of Hagerty Road to west of Sheldon Road. The proposed reconstruction includes a proposed boulevard along this area of Ford Road, as well as a proposed boulevard along parts of Hagerty Road just north and south of Ford Road. The project may require MDOT to acquire additional right-of-way in certain areas for any widening necessary for the proposed boulevard and turning looms. Before MDOT begins any right-of-way acquisition, MDOT is seeking a resolution from the Canton Township Board of Trustees that addresses any zoning nonconformities on properties impacted by the project, including reduced setbacks, loss of parking spaces, loss of landscaping, and loss of open space. Director Smith, do you have anything to add?
I do not. I think the resolution speaks for itself.
Yes, it sure does. Any discussion from the board or questions? Summer?
I was just wondering if Director Smith can give us an update on the Ford Road project and what MDOT has been working on.
This resolution is one of the items that we've been working on most recently with their council and the broker that's going to go out and start actually negotiating right-of-way acquisition. So once this is approved, they will start to go out and visit properties where there will be affected by the actual boulevard. They say they're still on track for construction within the next two years, and obviously, it's going to be a two-year process. For construction, the supervisor, along with the DDA, has also been working on the plantings and what the hardscapes will look like throughout. Actually, there's a subcommittee as well, and I think they meet this Friday to continue those talks about what that final look and feel will be of the boulevard. So still in the planning stages. I think they're pretty much done with the design at this point, and they will be, like I said, heading out and starting to work with some of the property owners along Ford Road.
Yeah.
You're welcome.
Stephen? Director Smith, not keeping me from being in favor of this, but a question on, does this resolution apply also to undeveloped properties on Ford Road? So for instance, I'm thinking of maybe the land to the west of Office Max, some of those areas where there's no development yet. And does this waive things for those properties?
That specifically has not been discussed, but I would say that that would not apply to those vacant properties, because when they come in, the road will have those plans. We don't have anything looking at that property right now. So once the road is in place, then the plans will be done according to the zoning standards that are required.
Okay, good.
I will say, we've even had some very good luck with the gas station on the corner of Ford and Hagerty on the northeast corner, sorry. He came in for revised site plan. And although the plans were not 100% in place for that, he worked with MDOT on what is probably going to be there to allow for that redevelopment of that site.
All right, thank you.
Do you have any other questions? Kate?
I had a question, just a comment that I'm glad that this was brought to the board. I think it's really important that we pass this resolution because, you know, the project will affect those property owners, and due to no fault of their own, it could make their properties nonconforming. So I appreciate that.
What else? Okay, Clerk Segrist, please take roll call on the motion.
Snyder... Slavens?
Aye.
Snyderman?
Aye.
Borninski?
Aye.
Foster?
Aye.
Ganguly?
Aye.
Graham Hudek?
Aye.
Segrist, aye.
Motion passes. Item G3, consider special land use for indoor pet boarding and training facility, Dogology University.
Madam Supervisor, I move that the board approve the following resolution. The approval of a special land use for Dogology University indoor pet boarding and training facility. Whereas, project sponsor has requested special land use approval for an indoor pet boarding and training facility on the subject tax parcel at 441254 Road. And whereas, Planning Commission reviewed this request and applicable criteria and voted 7 to 0 to recommend approval with conditions as the request meets the criteria of special land use approval in Sections 27.03, Subsection C of the zoning ordinance. Now therefore be it resolved, the Board of Trustees of the Charter Township of Canton, Michigan, is hereby approve the special land use for an indoor pet boarding and training facility on the subject tax parcel listed at 441254 Road as the request meets the special land use criteria of the Canton Township zoning ordinance pursuant to the information and plans provided subject to the site maintaining the standards of the previously approved site plans and meeting the noise standards of Section 7.02, Subsection A of the zoning ordinance.
Support.
Motion made by Clerk Segrist, supported by Trustee Snyderman. The project sponsor proposes to operate an indoor pet boarding and training facility at 44125 Ford Road, which is a site of the former Mag Formers. The site is located on the south side of Ford Road, east of Sheldon Road, which is located between Brookline Street and Elmhurst Street. The parcel is zoned C2, community commercial on the north 110 feet, and OSP, off-street parking on the south 100 feet. The building is located in the C2 zone portion of the parcel, except for the approximately southern 10 feet of the building, which is located in the OSP-zoned portion of the parcel. Therefore, the southern 10 feet of the building is not proposed to contain the indoor pet boarding and training use at this time. Indoor pet boarding and training facilities are special land uses in the C2 zoning district subject to Section 6.02-K3 of the zoning ordinance, which prohibits outdoor runs in exercise areas. At its meeting on September 13, 2021, the Planning Commission recommended approval of the special land use subject to the site maintaining the standards of the previously approved site plans and meeting the noise standards of Section 7.02A of the zoning ordinance. Director Smith, do you have anything to add?
I do not, unless there's any questions.
Trustee Foster, do you have anything to add from the Planning Commission?
Not really. There were a few emails that came into the Planning Commission prior to this being considered that brought up concerns around sanitation, but those were handled in the Planning Commission, and they're reflected in the minutes.
Thank you. Any discussion, questions? All right, Clerk Segrist, please take roll call on the motion.
Snyderman?
Aye.
Borninski?
Aye.
Foster?
Aye.
Ganguly?
Aye.
Graham Hudek?
Aye.
Segrist, aye. Slavens?
Aye.
Motion passes. Next item is G4, consider approving the purchase of upgraded LiveScan equipment as required by Clemis.
Madam Supervisor, I move to approve the purchase of upgraded LiveScan equipment as required by Clemis, utilizing their service provider Idemia Identity and Security USA LLC in the amount of $16,542, utilizing funds budgeted in the 2021 Police Capital Outlay Machinery and Equipment Account.
Thank you. Motion made by Clerk Segrist, supported by Treasurer Slavens. The Police Department is requesting to purchase upgraded equipment for its LiveScan systems located in booking and records. The upgrades are mandated for all Clemis users utilizing Idemia Identity and Security USA LLC as the service providing vendor. The total cost to upgrade both LiveScan systems is $16,542. Chief Chad Bao, do you have anything to add?
Just that this is a mandated system. We are working with Clemis, which tells us exactly who we have to work with and purchase these items from. But it goes to help us identify people. And/or, some of the functions that we have in our records bureau is fingerprinting for our citizens for different types of requirements through LARA, so teachers and whatnot.
Do you have any discussion or questions? All right, Clerk Segrist, please take roll call on the motion.
Borninski?
Aye.
Foster?
Aye.
Ganguly?
Aye.
Graham Hudek?
Aye.
Segrist, aye. Slavens?
Aye.
Snyderman?
Aye.
Motion passes. Item G5, consider waiving the bidding process and approve the purchase of a CLE Advanced Covert Pole Camera System.
Madam Supervisor, I move to waive the bidding process and approve the purchase of a CLE Advanced Covert Pole Camera System from Covert Law Enforcement in the amount of $10,749.56, utilizing federal GSA pricing in lieu of the township's bidding process.
Support.
Motion made by Clerk Segrist, supported by Trustee Snyderman. Motion made by Clerk Segras, supported by Trustee Snyderman. The police department is requesting to purchase a CLE Advanced Covert Pole Camera System in the amount of $10,749.56 from Covert Law Enforcement. This price quote was obtained using, utilizing federal GSA pricing in lieu of the township's bidding process. The department was awarded a JAG grant earlier in the year for surveillance equipment in the amount of $8,704. The balance will be paid using forfeiture funds. Chief Chad, do you have anything to add?
Yes, we quite often conduct surveillance. This pole cam allows us to be more efficient. Officers are not in the field. Risk management issue, too, less context with citizens that we're surveilling. We work with GSA pricing, and it's a lower bid, but it doesn't follow what we traditionally would do, so this is the first time we're using GSA. It's a pre-negotiated price that the federal government utilizes for their equipment.
Any questions or comments? All right, Clerk Segras, please take roll call on the motion.
Foster?
Aye.
Ganguly?
Aye.
Graham Hudek?
Aye.
Segras, aye. Slavens?
Aye.
Snyderman?
Aye.
Borninski?
Aye.
Motion passes. Next item, G six, consideration of first reading of an ordinance amending Chapter forty-six of the Canton Code of Ordinances to comply with the Raise the Age legislation, Public Acts ninety-seven through one fourteen of the Michigan Public Acts of 2019.
Madam Supervisor, I move to introduce for first reading an ordinance amending Chapter forty-six, Sections forty-six dash two four three, forty-six dash five oh one, forty-six five oh five? Is that five oh three? Sorry, my eyes. And forty-six five three four of the Canton Code of Ordinances, and to schedule a second reading on October 12, 2021.
Support.
Motion made by Clerk Segras, supported by Trustee Borninski. The board is being asked to consider an amendment to various sections of Charter forty-six of the Canton Code of Ordinances entitled offenses and miscellaneous provisions that will increase the age at which individuals in the juvenile justice system are treated as adults from seventeen to eighteen years old. Chief Chad Bow, do you have anything to add?
No, this just helps us be in compliance with the public acts that recently occurred. Starting October 1st, October 12th, the second reading, if approved by the board, we'll be able to be in full compliance and utilize our local ordinances for the age seventeen.
Okay, thank you. Any questions or comments? Trustee Borninski?
So I'm very happy that we're going to be compliant with this law now. I was watching these bills when I was on the school board, and I think it's really important that, that they were passed, and I am very glad that, you know, we're taking this action tonight.
Any other questions? Stephen?
Unlike you, I was not aware of them when they were coming through, so I'm really glad to see them. I think it's very important legislation. The only question I have is it mentions that the reduced funding for incarceration of seventeen-year-olds could be used for diversion programs, and I was wondering if there was anything formal in the budget, state budget for that, that we might see.
I haven't seen the path, how it comes back to our police department. What should be important to note, our diversion program that we've had the most conversation about in this venue is pre-diversion, or pre-conviction, or pre-even touching the court. So our diversion program starts before you even go to court. So I'm not certain how that actually works. You'll see an RBA in the near future that we'll ask the board for $25,000 from our forfeiture funds to use for our diversion programming for out-of-county juveniles. That will be coming soon, but you're allowed by the Department of Justice to utilize $25,000 for community programming, and we're starting to see some juveniles now that are out-county juveniles that are not supported through their traditional diversion program.
All right, thank you.
Anyone else? Summer?
I just had a comment.
Tanya, go ahead.
Yeah, I just wanted to concur with the Trustee Snyderman and Borninski that this is a, you know, this is an important step in, in the right direction, and I'm very happy that we are going to change the ordinance for that.
Thank you. Trustee, Summer?
I agree with what has been said. I worked very closely with advocates who really lobbied for this legislation in Lansing, and I'm glad to see that we are, that we are complying with it here in Canton.
Anyone else? Great, thank you. Clerk Segras, please take a roll call on the motion.
Foster?
Aye.
Ganguly?
Aye.
Graham Hudek?
Aye.
Segras, aye. Slavens?
Aye.
Snyderman?
Aye.
Borninski?
Aye.
Thank you. Motion passes. Next item is G seven, consider an increase of PO 2021 dash one three oh five in PO 2020 one three six six for the 2021 road improvement program.
Madam Supervisor, I move to increase purchase order 2021 one three zero five by $137,000 for Great Lakes Contracting Services LLC for the 2021 concrete residential road project. Purchase order 2020 one three six six by $18,000 for Spalding Decker for the 2021 concrete residential road project, and to make the attached budget amendments.
Support.
Motion made by Clerk Segras, supported by Trustee Snyderman. At the April 13, 2021 meeting of the township board, the board awarded contracts with Great Lakes Contracting Services LLC and Spalding Decker SDA for work on the 2021 residential program under the road improvement millage. Since that time, as the work has progressed, some adjustments to the work within two individual subdivisions and in the unmatched work have been identified. Therefore, the current purchase orders for both Great Lakes and SDA will need to be increased. Director Smith, do you have anything to add?
Yeah, just to clarify, so on Central Park Phase One, the largest project that we do on an annual basis is 200,000, and they had submitted 100,000 with the hopes of doing another 100 in 2022. They were able to come up with those funds earlier, so we moved all of their projects up to this year, which is going to allow us to do more subdivisions in 2022. They were, you know, we have a whole list that are approved for 22 and 23, so some of those 23 projects will now be able to be completed in 2022. That's probably, and then in regards to Pheasant Woods, that is really just cleaning up that their project should have been $100,000, and for some reason, we'd only put $95,000 in the previous request to the board.
Any questions or discussions? Nope. Clerk Segras, please take roll call on the motion.
Ganguly?
Aye.
Graham Hudek?
Aye.
Segras, aye. Slavens?
Aye.
Snyderman?
Aye.
Borninski?
Aye.
Foster?
Aye.
Thank you. Motion passes. Last item, item G eight, consider request to increase blanket purchase order for human resources.
Madam Supervisor, I move to approve the increase in the blanket purchase order issued to Suburban Occupational Health by $14,000 to accommodate the occupational health testing and evaluations through the remainder of 2021.
Thank you. Motion made by Clerk Segras, supported by Treasurer Slavens. At the beginning of 2021, the board approved a blanket purchase order to Suburban Occupational Health. After analyzing the purchase needs for the remainder of the year and taking into account new hires and the return of work hiring testing required due to extended pandemic absences, we are requesting to increase the blanket purchase order by $14,000. This is a request for a blanket purchase order increase only. No changes are being requested to the 2021 human resources budget. The vendor is listed Suburban Occupational Health, PO number, and increase of 14,000. Any questions or discussions? All right, Clerk Segras, please take roll call on the motion.
Graham Hudek?
Aye.
Segras, aye. Slavens?
Aye.
Snyderman?
Aye.
Borninski?
Aye.
Foster?
Aye.
Ganguly?
Aye.
Motion passes. Is there anything else that the staff members would like to speak to? Jade, go ahead.
I just wanted to let everybody know, I sent an email to the supervisor and our communications team tonight that GFL has requested to continue with the yard waste pickup on Saturdays as they have been doing. We've actually found that that's been very successful. We have not had nearly as many complaints on missed trash and missed recycling, so they requested to extend that through the month of October, and we have let them, we've told them to go ahead and continue doing that because it seems to be working. The unfortunate thing is the focus has already been published and is on its way out, but we will get the word out on the website and on social media, and then we will get a memo out to the entire staff tomorrow so that if there's any questions, people can relay the correct information.
Anyone else, Stan? Their new deputy supervisor, Joseph Haver, I'm sorry, H-A-W-E-R, we don't have the name plate there yet, so I didn't want to say hi.
Hello, I'm Joseph Haver.
Welcome.
Thank you. Welcome. Any public comment? Do we have any hands online?
The only hand I see is Tanya Ganguly. Trustee Ganguly has her hand raised.
Oh, I had raised it earlier, sorry. I don't know, okay. Now I can lower the hand.
Thank you.
I got great reviews of the event Friday night, is that right?
Yeah. The event went off great. Alison Schmidt was there. I think the crowd really loved seeing the Olympic swimmer and mental health awareness champion, so they liked, and then the fireworks, that all I saw were good things on Facebook. So that went well. And then we had the police awards on Sunday, so that went well also. I know the policemen were tired from, both from the event, working long hours.
It learned it's probably not best to have a awards banquet at Sunday at seven, but otherwise it was very nice, very nice, well attended. Officer Ed Yax's wife was there to receive his officer of the year award, so it was very nice.
It was a nice night also. Anything else? No. Kind of a motion to adjourn?
No moves?
Motion made by Trustee Snyderman, supported by Treasurer Slavens. Clerk Segras, please take roll call.
Segras, aye. Slavens?
Aye.
Snyderman?
Aye.
Borninski?
Aye.
Foster?
Aye.
Ganguly?
Aye.
Graham Hudek?
Aye.
Great, thank you, everyone. Have a great night.
Right.